Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Perlottanda.
Counselor Tejada.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop. Counselor Ray Cooper. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight members present. We have a forum, Madam Chairman. First out of our business, Hon Muyamson, celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas Maria Figueroa has worked for CAPIC in the after-school program for more than forty years, and whereas Maria Figueroa started on February 5th, 1979, as an assistant group leader, and in 1988 became a group leader, and whereas in 2004 Maria switched roles and became a bus monitor teacher, picking up children in Chelsea and Rivera, and whereas Maria Figueroa in 2015 started helping the Child Development Center and head start program. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Chelsea, wish to go on record to thank you, Maria Figueroa, for your dedicated work while helping others and wish you a long and healthy retirement.
Counselor Robinson.
We have the suspension. Actually Maria couldn't be here with us tonight as she left for Puerto Rico on Friday and then going to be there for a while and then she's going to Pennsylvania. So I presented her with the resolution on Friday and just to finalize it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
The two public hearings you want to announce, they've been continued to December 23rd.
Which ones?
We have a scheduled public hearing on a proposed zoning amendment to the Chelsea zoning ordinance on the storage of vehicles, and also a public hearing on a proposed zoning amendment to the Chelsea zoning ordinance on the Community Improvement Trust Fund.
Oh, we haven't heard that.
And we have no communication from Planning and Development, which would authorize us to go forward, so we will be continuing until December 23rd, the public hearing.
Okay. December 23rd for the public hearings AMD, so we'll go straight to same.
So now you go right.
So we have a scheduled public hearing regarding the FY 2020 tax rates, minimum residential factor classification and residential exemption. Anyone that wishes to come up and speak regarding the residential tax exemptions is more than welcome to come up to the microphone. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the FY 2020 tax rates. Going once. I'm, what is she, I can't hear, I can't hear what she's saying. For the public, and then I was going to invite the city manager to go up and speak.
It's on both of them.
Oh, yes. Please state your name and title and address for the record.
My name is Mary Lou Island and I'm the assessor for the City of Chelsea. So I would like to thank the members of the public and the council members who care enough to educate themselves on the tax process, and I'm proud to say that our values and our growth have been certified by the Department of Revenue. Having said that, I would like to take this opportunity to help clarify and correct some misconceptions that have been circulated about the assessor's office and the work we have been doing. The models, methods, and data that exist in this office for the past seventeen years are the ones that we inherited. We did not create them, and I could not speak to how or why they were developed or implemented. I can only focus on the following plans that the Department of Revenue has directed our office to complete, as well as other processes that need to change, and this is exactly what our office has been doing for the past four years. To help you put the magnitude of this plan in perspective, I would like to provide you with an analogy. If the DPW were asked to dig up every street in the city, replace the pipes, and then repave, how long would it realistically take for that to happen? I've been given an estimate of at least over twenty years. The assessor's office is doing something of similar magnitude. We have implemented a plan that will be continuous and a dynamic process of meeting standards put forth by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. While we have already made changes to several thousand properties, we are not done. We will be making more modifications due to the depreciation table conversions that was part of the DOR directives that I had mentioned earlier this month. The table changes that took place this year left us with a list of properties that are a priority for us to do interior inspections on, which we have already begun. I have expressed to you that we are continually working on this, and I encourage you to have realistic expectations about how long it takes to make appropriate adjustments. We cannot magically make massive changes without visiting these properties, analyzing the data, and documenting everything for the DOR as to why we made the changes. This takes time and cooperation. I would also like to emphasize that while we are tackling this sizable task, we, the assessor's office continues to fulfill its usual responsibilities. We handle motor vehicle excise, statutory exemptions, residential exemptions, a buyer's list, personal property, mapping, addressing, producing tax bill files four times a year, building permits, and much more. We accomplish all of this with a staff of four people. We presently have a very dedicated, hardworking, knowledgeable staff and the Board of Assessors who serve the public well. We work late and come in early on a regular basis. In conclusion, I would like to say that while I appreciate people participating in local government, there is a need for civility, respectfulness, accuracy, and truth in that involvement.
Yes.
I realize that mass appraisal is a difficult concept to grasp, even for those who are in the field of selling real estate. I can only leave you with this analogy that might help put the mass appraisal process in perspective. A person who sells a car does not have the same skills as the mechanic who does the repairs on it. I would like to thank the members of the council and the community for understanding the substantial task at hand, maintaining reasonable expectations, and appreciating the incredible accomplishments this entire office has completed as part of the ongoing plan. Our office prepares a very extensive spreadsheet of data in Excel format for everyone to view on our website every January if anyone is interested in viewing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Mr. Ambrosino, would you mind coming up, suspend the rules and coming up and just addressing the public regarding the tax rate?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So, a couple of things. Let me just say, let me just reiterate something that I've said at a couple of different public meetings on this. Assessing in a municipality is very different than appraising individual parcels. The mass appraisal process, which municipalities are required to go through to assess properties, is subject to exacting scrutiny from the Mass Department of Revenue and subject to specific and unique rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue. And this mass appraising, this global appraising, is different than individual appraising, and so inherent in that process is there are occasionally abnormalities in individual valuations. That's sort of inherent in the process. It's why the statutory scheme is set up to allow individual property owners to challenge their valuation, and municipalities are required each and every year to set aside significant money because there is an expectation that there are going to be individual properties that end up in this mass appraisal process with odd valuations. So every city and town, every year, sets aside significant money for abatements, including the City of Chelsea, which sets aside on an annual basis roughly $700,000 for this purpose. Second, I would say the values that you have tonight were indeed subject to exacting scrutiny by the Department of Revenue. This was a five-year revaluation year for the City of Chelsea, so it meant lots of different and more substantial work had to be done by the assessors. It also meant that the Department of Revenue was looking at that work with a fine-toothed comb, examining all of the equations, the depreciation tables, the values. The DOR actually spent a full month reviewing all of our values and finally fully certified them this past week, which meant in DOR's mind, we met the exacting requirements of mass appraisal and our value satisfied Massachusetts law. That doesn't mean everything, every value is perfect. As Mary Lou said, this is a work in progress, but it's something that has to be done in collaboration with the Department of Revenue, and it is a process we are engaged in, hand in hand with the Department of Revenue, to make continuous improvement, and that is our goal. I would say this, the end result of this five-year revaluation for Chelsea homeowners is not significantly adverse. When you look at what we're proposing as a tax rate and a residential exemption, the impact on the taxpayers in Chelsea is relatively modest. For the average single-family owner-occupant and the average owner-occupant of a three-family or four-family unit in Chelsea, there is either a reduction in taxes or no increase at all. The only, if assuming you adopt the 175% shift and the 31% residential exemption, both of which I'm recommending, then the only, the only classes that will see an increase this year are condominiums and two families, and they are relatively modest ones. I would say that for condos, which last year had an average 13% decrease, the average tax bill this year is still less, less than it was two years ago. So these are, these, this recommendation is a modest one for residential taxpayers, and keep in mind one final point. As a matter of policy, this council gives a huge tax break every year to residential homeowners. The 31% residential exemption that is being recommended tonight, and I hope you will pass, gives a $2140-plus tax break off the top to every owner-occupant in the city. There are 351 cities and towns in this Commonwealth. There aren't more than two or three that give that kind of a tax break to residential homeowners. So as a matter of policy, you really do work hard to ensure that owner-occupants in the city aren't overly burdened by residential taxes. I guess I just have to add one thing because I've seen the amendment being proposed. If you seek to approve a tax rate that has a 0% increase in the tax levy this year, that means that you want to revert to the tax levy of last year. That means that you want to appropriate for property taxes, not the 61.5 million that we need to balance our budget, but the 57.8 million that we collected in taxes last year. That can be done. It is not illegal. It would mean you are creating a $3.7 million imbalance in your budget that has to be filled. At this point, the only revenue source available to fill that kind of a deficit is free cash or stabilization funds, but it would mean you are balancing your budget with 3.7 million in additional free cash. Remember, we already balanced this budget with $694,000 of free cash. Now that's a modest number. It's consistent with what you've done in the past. The better approach would be never use free cash to balance your operating budget, but historically the city, I should say, at least the last decade or so, has used about 700,000, 800,000 free cash to balance its budget. We balanced this budget with $694,000 in free cash. If you create another $3.7 million hole in this budget, you will have to have an additional vote of additional free cash to balance it because DOR will not accept an unbalanced budget in setting a tax rate. I would just add that my recommendation is that would be fiscally irresponsible to balance an operating budget with that much free cash. Using that kind of one-time reserve to balance your budget is the kind of fiscal conduct that gets cities and towns in serious, serious trouble. You will start next year with a $4.5 million deficit that you'd have to cover again next year, meaning you'd have to start next year appropriating 4.5 million more in free cash just to get back to a starting point. This is not the way fiscally responsible cities and towns do business. You would be going back to the days prior to receivership. I urge you not to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrosino. Public hearing is closed. We're moving on to public speaking. Any members of the public that wish to speak, please come up and speak. State your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
My name is Roman Puckel. I am a resident of 191 Lynnfield Street, Peabody, Mass, and have been a resident there from October 1975 to present. The Puckel family moved to Chelsea in the early 1900s. They moved to Chelsea from South Boston and were part of the group that established St. Stanislaus Parish. The reason for moving to Chelsea was because the cost of living was less expensive than that in South Boston, and there was a bus that would take them to City Square so they could have access to public transportation into the City of Boston. My father was known well in Chelsea, and the statue of him was dedicated at Stubbs Fountain in Chelsea Square. The reason why we left Chelsea was because of prostitution and the sale of illegal drugs. The father of a friend of mine was once attacked on Fourth Street, beaten up, and robbed. I am a Vietnam-era veteran and served as a commissioned officer in the United States Army Signal Corps in Hanau, Germany, at an army airbase, one of two in airfields in Germany, Lieghoferskessern, Company B, 504 Signal Battalion. I am a member of the Polish-American Veterans Post 13 of Chelsea and was a member from December of 65 to present. I spent so much time attending meetings at City Hall that at one time a counselor asked J.A.S. to furnish me an office in City Hall. Recently someone else suggested that I should have a space and approached the city manager for office space. Here's Chelsea is my hometown. Today I'm asking the city council, especially the counselor of District 3 and the newly-elected counselor of District 3, along with the three counselors at large, to look at Carter Street between Washington Avenue and Armond Street. It's in deplorable condition. A lot of students from Chelsea High have to use that every time they go to school. The curbing for driveways isn't right, and the sidewalks are in deplorable condition. I hope someone can work on that so that improvements can be made. It seems to me that the public speaking at the city council meeting is just to let off steam. No notes of significant importance are taken, and I was informed that I should check with Chelsea Community Cable TV and get a, look at the coverage that they have. I would like to know how to address the situation to this council.
One more minute.
To consider my comments during public speaking. Am I doing something wrong? Should I write something to the council members? Or what should I do to get this going? Thank you for consideration and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Puckel. Anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking, going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Counselor Rodriguez.
I have a motion to make items F and G out of order. There's no objection.
Both items related to the tax, the residential tax rate, um, the residential exemption and the tax rate. All right, it's properly before us. Did you want to speak on it? What did you, what would you like to do with it?
Want me to read it?
Roll call.
Want me to read it? First order introduced by Counselor Brown, ordered that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 31% residential exemption. You want the other one first? Ordered that the Chelsea City Council adopt the minimum residential tax factor for the fiscal year 2020 with the 1.75 commercial, industrial, and personal property CIP shift factor.
Roll call.
Roll call. Would you like to speak on it, or anybody wish to speak on it?
A yes vote would be to approve. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Perlottanda absent. Counselor Tejada absent. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop absent. And Counselor Ray Cooper.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight in favor and an opposed, three absent. Motion is adopted. The next order on the tax rate is ordered that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 31% residential exemption for fiscal year 2020.
Counselor Rodriguez.
I have a motion to make an amendment on the roll call vote.
Did you want to speak on it? Okay. No discussion. Counselor Avellaneda, can you bring your microphone down, please?
I have a motion to make an amendment on that. Presented to the city clerk. If he could read it.
Want me to read it? Amendment offered by Counsel Avellaneda, amendment to the order on adoption of a 31% residential exemption for FY 2020. Be it amended that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 31% residential exemption for fiscal year 2020 and a 0% increase of the 2019 tax levy.
Did you want to speak?
Yes. Motion to adopt on a roll call vote and then speak if I can. Thank you. Tonight's order, we have two orders in front of us. One was the maximum shift, and the second, right, which was already passed, and now the 31% residential exemption. As part of the presentation that was given to us by the assessor and the city manager last month, there were three things that they were asking us. One was the shift that we always do to increase the rates for commercial to, over residential, and one, an increase, a suggested increase of the residential tax exemption, 31%, that is in, that is still here. One order, rather, another request was that we go the full 2.5% increase on the tax levy, which is the taxes from last year, the full 2.5. By law, that's the maximum we can go, but there is nothing in any orders here presented ever that actually gives that permission, so to speak. So I wanted to put it in writing that we vote yes or no, and more particular, I'm asking for a 0% increase. Reason being is that in that very same presentation, you know, it talks there that how the approximately 61 million is allocated amongst individual property taxpayers depends upon valuation of individual properties. How the tax is distributed against everybody is by the value, basically a ratio. That's how they distribute the tax burden by the residents. Now, I have raised a point in subcommittee and stated that while the city does a very good job of evaluating the smaller properties, condos, the single families, the two families, and the three families, more likely because it's so much data is out there, how you can go on Zillow and find out what your house is worth. Data's there. Unfortunately, there's not very good data out there for the larger families, and it's up to the assessor's office to try to evaluate that. And I take a little offense about what was said here tonight about the, you know, mechanic versus the sellperson. I'm sorry if my pedestrian opinion, I find some faults in the system. I'm not a police expert, but it doesn't help me from advocating for better policing in my community. I don't happen to be a traffic planner, but you know what? Once in a while, I put ask for a one-way street sign to be changed direction. That's what we do here. And if I see, I think, unfairness in the way taxes and rate is distributed in this community, I'm going to advocate for those homeowners. Now, that's what the whole system should be, about the fairness of how we distribute the tax burden in these communities. And I have seen just a list of 100 properties that don't make sense regardless. You just can't. I tried, and that, that, the way that it doesn't make sense means that we're not capturing, in my humble opinion, pedestrian opinion, close to $37 million worth of value out there. That's minimum. I've heard it all. I've heard, you know, values about affordable. Well, I've seen the gamut from highs and lows all over the place. Makes no sense. I've seen two identical types of properties, 12-unit buildings, one located on Congress Street at $2.4 million, and one located on Third Street at 1.3. It makes no sense. None. All I can say and all you can think is that they're just not capturing the value, and if they're not capturing the value, then when you divide that tax burden, you have scenario two. I printed it out for you. I guys made an example. When you look at scenario two, you'll see that because they didn't value the larger property properly, you end up having a higher tax rate, and you have unfairly the other smaller properties picking up that burden. It's simple math. No matter what the city's going to collect, wants to collect, it's $61 million. How it spreads it out is based on evaluating, properly evaluating.
Counselor, I don't want to cut you off, but just can you wrap it up, please?
He's giving me his four minutes.
Okay. It's five.
Five. Properly evaluating those properties, and I'm saying here tonight that it's not. If you add $37 million worth of valuation, and this is conservative, the tax rate would go, would lower, and our working-class home residents would be paying, saving money on their bills, and that's all this is about. That's what I'm trying to do. Advocate for the homeowner to make sure they're not overpaying. This rate, even despite that it's lower than last year, is still unfair because they're still overpaying because there are larger properties not paying full value for theirs. It's that simple. It's not complicated. And I knew I was going to get the sky is falling routine, you know, from the city manager about we're going to go into surplus, you know, we're going to have to go into rainy day fund, we're going to have to get money from here. I knew that was coming, but I just want to remind everyone, last week, we were certified a surplus of $12 million from last year's budget. Where did that $12 million come from? We obviously didn't cut enough fat in the budget that we had a surplus of $12 million. And if we have to dig into the reserves to make up the difference by not voting for a 2.5 rate tonight, oh, well, that amount of $30 million, in my opinion, was unjustly collected from the homeowners because they didn't properly value all those homes and those properties the first time. We overcharged them for years. And let me add this, as tough as the job as the assessor has to say that they have a 20-year project in front of them, does that mean that the homeowners have to wait 20 years before they're properly valued? And we have that? If it's a DPW project and they had to do a similar system, it would take 20 years. That's the project. That was the, that was the comparison that was given, that the DPW would have to change, it would take them 20 years to do this project, and that's how long it would take. But I got to ask you, when you're overcharging a homeowner like Joe Ingram on Grove Street, who's 70 years old, working part-time and not retired because he has to figure out how to pay his taxes and his home bills, can he wait two, three more years before we finally capture all this value? Or do we say, hey, you know what? The system is broke. Let's not. Or do we say, hey, you know what, the system is broke, let's not collect any more taxes, zero increase, and force the city manager and the assessor to come up and fix what is broken? Until then, this collection of taxes, this rate is unfair. It's unfair. We're picking the pockets of our homeowners unfairly. I don't do this lightly. I am not the type to make this sort of dramatic request, but given where we are at right now, and given the information that we have, it's not right that we do this and go forward like, ho-hum, don't worry, we'll get to it next year, the year after. No. Cut off the spigot. No more leaking. Fix the leaks, fix your problem, and don't pass the buck on to the homeowners. That's what I'm asking. So, vote for the 3.5, 31% residential taxation, and zero tax increase, until they fix it, until we have something proper, so that not only this pedestrian understands it, but everyone else. Again, it makes no sense, these values. Thank you.
Any other counselors wish to speak? No. Counselor Robinson?
I do applaud my colleague for bringing this to our attention. I think it's something that we should look at addressing in the next year's budget, being that we had already set the budget. You know, we may not like the values, but these values were thoroughly reviewed by the DOR. The DOR is the expert in the field and certified these values. I think we can rely on that expert review and deciding. Even if we don't like them, these values are legitimate. I think new rates of residential homeowners is modest, assuming that we just voted for the 31%. The single families have gone up a little bit, an increase in two families and threes, the condominiums are kind of down. We shouldn't lose sight of the fact that because the city offers such a generous residential tax exemption to homeowners, our average tax bill is the lowest of any surrounding community. It doesn't make sense to be critical of the city financial departments. We have over 28 million in stabilization reserves. We just got certified for another 12 million in free cash. As we close the fiscal year for 2019, we must be doing something right. My concern is, if we have to pony up 4 million and start out in a hole next year, that we could be looking back at being set up in receivership, which I disagree that we shouldn't be heading in that direction.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Any other counselors wish to speak on the topic, Counselor Brown?
Wasn't going to say anything, but being the chairman of the finance committee, I got to say something. So, so, I valid the concerns it's brought before us tonight. I know we've gave it a lot of thought, we've had many subcommittees. Point I don't like, and I'm just going to put it out there, I do not like the thought of us going into a year that we know that we're going to be down 4 million, and that we have to potentially lay off some folks, stop some projects, halt some projects, or just find other necessary means, which we really don't have. Yes, we have free, free cash, we have stabilization count, but again, that is not what we should be budgeting our balance on. We've done a lot of good work here. I'm trying to, you know, buy into this, I listened to my colleague, I came in early to listen to him, and I just think it's just too late in the game for us to now to come up and criticize an opportunity where that we've heard from, not only from our chairperson, from the assessors, but we've also heard about the standard they receive from the Department of Revenue, which goes over those data information that we provide and bring before them. And I also listened thoroughly to the city manager regarding what would happen. Just think about it, what would happen, what potentially could happen. And I don't think the city manager has ever showed me any threat of fear regarding, this is what you need to do, this is what you shouldn't do. But the fear of just going into a year where we've worked so hard to make our city what it is today shows that not only are we spending the money, we're doing the right thing, but also, we're about to make a mistake if we just jump to conclusions. I agree with my counselor at large that this year should be a project. I mean, I wish this was, you know, a subcommittee at 6 o'clock today, that we would have had a chance to say, okay, what can we do at this point? So, that's what I asked my colleagues, now, what can we do at this point? Can we not vote and vote the 23rd, or do we have to vote? If we have to vote, we have to vote. It's too late in the game to say, you know, I'll support the 31%, but I won't, you know, ask them for zero. Actually, I don't even know if we can do that, to be honest. I know we talk about 2.5 increase, that's something that the voters have, that's an initiative that the voters have to take on. So that's not something that we, as 11-member council, will make a position on. You know, the assessors department spoke thoroughly, clearly, that, you know, it is going to take some overhauling. The last four years, I picked that up, the last four years, they've been working and trying to assess these things. And, you know, truth be told, if we vote in favor of the amendment, it tells us that we haven't been doing our job. And I believe that I've been doing my job, I believe that my colleagues have been doing the best job they possibly can, and I think we continue to do a great job. But we, we can't go back and say, you know, this is here now, we have to stop the process before the end of the year. It's, you know, I appreciate it, Counsel, I mean, I really do, I know you're really passionate about it, I know you have these numbers that you brought out, but I talked to residents for the last two weeks, we announced it, we wanted folks to come up, I thought folks would be up here saying, hey, you know, you guys are just doing, putting too much taxes on the resident. We didn't have that tonight. The residents that I talked to, and, you know, it was a few dozen, they say that they're okay, they're okay with what we were going to vote on. And for me to get an amendment tonight and say, okay, you know what, I listened to that, but I haven't listened to them on this amendment, so I would have to vote against this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Recupero?
I believe the assessors department inherited all the problem. I believe the assessors department inherited this problem. Mary Lou, or the assessors, is trying to fix the situation that we're in. For years, I've been saying the same thing, that taxes haven't been equal, and people should be equal to all of us, and shouldn't be such a burden on all the people of our city, that a tax issue go down. But I believe that the assessors department inherited this, and I believe they, they're going to try to fix the situation. They're not there just saying, oh, we're not going to do nothing about it. I believe they are going to do something about it. And if they don't, the next year, when this comes up, then this will be an issue, and then, we'll shut it down. I believe in that, that I believe that, right now, they deserve an opportunity to try to fix the situation. If they don't, next year, you shut it down, and that's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Recupero. Any other counselors wish to speak on the topic? All right, let's do a roll call.
Roll call on the amendment, yes?
I'm sorry, the...
Set by the roll call.
Yep. The roll call is on the amendment introduced by Counselor Roya Valianeda. Amendment to the order on the adoption of the 31% residential exemption for FY 2020, be it amended that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 31% residential exemption for fiscal year 2020, and a 0% increase of the 2019 tax levy.
A yes vote would adopt the amendment, and no vote would deny it.
Point of information, do you have a question, Counselor Lopez?
Yeah, I have a question. So we're going to have two votes?
So this is just for the amendment? Then if this, whether this, if this goes through, it passes. If it doesn't, then we go back to the other, the original order.
There's only one vote for this.
Correct.
Two votes, if...
If it passes, then that's it.
One vote.
If it doesn't, we go back to the original.
Okay. A yes vote would be to approve the amendment. Counselor Garcia? Counselor Vido?
No.
Counsel Abadizaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counsel Perlatanda absent, Counsel Tejada absent, Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counselor Bishop absent, Counsel Recupero?
No.
One in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, news, three absent. The amendment is defeated. On the original motion, vote calls been requested by Counselor Brown, a yes would be to adopt, and no would be to deny.
This would be for the 31% residential exemption.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Abadizaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Counsel Lopez?
Yes. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm waiting, nope, Lopez.
Counselor Lopez, yes.
I'm waiting on it. Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Perlatanda absent, Counsel Tejada absent, Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop absent, Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. The order was adopted.
Okay. Approval of minutes. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes? Counsel Brown most adopt. Accept and file communication, or whatever you're supposed to be saying right now.
Okay. We have now the communications from the city manager, first communication. Partial payment of excise tax bills. I am writing a response to the recent city council order requesting that the city agree to allow residents to make partial payments of outstanding excise tax bills. After discussing this matter with treasurer-collector Patrice Montefusco, I see no reason why the city cannot accommodate this request. From this point forward, the city will accept partial payment of excise tax bills, provided the resident signs a payment agreement with the collector. Although this change will enable residents on such a payment plan to obtain local parking permits, it will not fully resolve all of their vehicle-related issues. By law, residents with outstanding excise tax bills are prohibited by the registry of motor vehicles from renewing license or registration. Allowing partial payments will not help in these circumstances. The MMV cannot issue the license or registration until the excise tax is paid in full. See Massachusetts General Law Chapter 68 and 2A. There are two other legal constraints on these partial payments. First, interest will continue to accrue on the outstanding amount of the excise and the amount of 12% per year until the excise is paid in full. And second, the partial payments must be applied by the collector to outstanding amounts in the following order: accrued interest, collecting, a collection cost, and then the actual outstanding excise tax. Massachusetts General Law Chapter 60 and 3E.
Counselor Garcia?
Motion to accept and file unanimously, and if there are no objections, and I wish to speak.
You have the four counselors, so move.
So this is a very exciting day. Thank you so much, the city clerk, for reading this. I want to just inform our residents that this is very great news. Essentially, what the communication is, is explaining is that residents of the city of Chelsea will be able to make monthly payments towards their car excise bills that they have. This was not an option that was given before. I do want to clarify, as it was mentioned before, that this will not clear them from any vehicle-related issues that they had in the past. All this does is it allows residents from the city of Chelsea to make monthly payments, which was not an option before. So, it's great news for our residents, if anyone is burdened by the costs of paying this excise bill. Now, you can make monthly payments. Of course, it doesn't clear you from, you know, the dues that you have with the registry of motor vehicles, meaning, you know, you won't be able to renew your license or registration, but it does allow you to make monthly payments with the city, which provides a lot of financial relief for many of our residents in the city of Chelsea. So, I want to take a moment to thank our city manager, Tom Abresino, along with Patrice Montefusco, who is the treasurer and a collector of our city, for really looking into this and accepting this, this order on my request. So, very exciting.
Thank you, Counsel Garcia. I think we have an amendment from Counselor Robinson, move this to a subcommittee?
I'd like to, for a subcommittee, and I do have...
On conference?
For a conference. I would like to know how this will work, who will notify the tax collector? If anyone is behind in payments? You know, what if they have outstanding parking tickets? Will, and we have to hire someone to oversee this program?
All right, let's move to a subcommittee on conference.
Next communications.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Okay, then go ahead, Counsel, my apologies, clerk.
When we go to conference and we talk about it, can we get rid of the 12% a year interest?
So let's talk about it in conference, let's, let's, let's talk about it in conference. Let's move on to the next order of business.
Solar signage. Dear counselors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting the installation of solar-powered flashing crosswalk signs at the intersection of Central Ave and Sharmah Street. Please note that the DPW has purchased a handful of solar-powered flashing crosswalk signs and stop signs over the past few months. In every place we have installed these signs, residents have commented favorably upon their traffic calming influence. We are also in the process of obtaining some similar solar-powered speed limit signs for a similar impact. Unfortunately, this solar-powered signage is significantly more expensive than standard metal signs. As a result, the DPW signage appropriation is close to, close to exhausted. For that reason, I will be seeking in early 2020, from the newly certified free cash, an appropriation to supplement this line and allow for the city to continue to purchase and install these popular solar-powered signs. Assuming that appropriation is approved, the DPW will ensure that we acquire and install solar-powered crosswalk signs at this Central Ave-Sharmah Street intersection.
Can I have a motion? Accept and file communication under suspension. Should this go to a subcommittee?
The next communication from the city manager, reconstruction of Lynn Street. Dear counselors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting that the city replace the street and sidewalks on Lynn Street between Central Ave and Chester Ave. It is the city's intention to review the condition of all city streets over the course of the next few months in preparation for our 2020 street and sidewalk reconstruction program. Unfortunately, we already know of many streets that we expect to be on that list, including several previously requested by city council orders, including Marble Street and East Side Ave. I commit that we will carefully analyze the condition of Lynn Street as part of this review. If we can fit Lynn Street within the 2020 program, we will do so. If not, it will be among our highest priorities for the 2021 construction season.
Seeing none, so move, Counselor. Next order of business.
Let's see, we have a late communication from the, we have a late communication from the city manager on fiscal year 2020 tax recaps.
Any objections to a late communication from the city manager? Go ahead.
Fiscal year 2020 tax recapsheet. Dear counselors, in preparation for tonight's public hearing on the FY 20 tax rate, I have attached for your review a draft of the first four pages of the tax reconciliation sheet, which the city will submit to the...
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
We have a late communication from Stanley J. Usolovich, Planning and Development Director, John De Priest, oh, the carpets have gone to him, he's from, let me see, Verizon. And this is with regards to the 5G proposal, I think you've been acting on it, I think he's commenting on it. Zone yardage change to accommodate the 5G installation, proposed ordinance amendment.
Okay.
To the planning board, not the planning board, um...
Planning and development.
Planning and development, sorry. Actual response back for the counsel?
They've already received them, according to the... Accept and file?
Yeah. I saw they did Fenway Park last week.
What's on with this?
That's attachments, or that's from Tom. Okay, that's it on communications. We now have new business. Oh, second readings, okay. First, second reading is for the appointments to boards and commissions.
Roll call vote that we adopt the appointment?
We affirm the appointment.
I do want to, just for the record, for people watching at home, read the names. So, for appointments to boards and commission, we have, and commissions, we have appointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Mr. Aaron Kramer from 27 John Street in Chelsea, to serve the remainder of the term of Mr. George Bassels. For appointment to Human Rights Commission, Mr. C. Nicole Barrett, Miss, Ms. C. Nicole Barrett from 325 Commandant's Way, to serve the remainder of the term of Reverend Sandra Whitley. For appointment to the Tree Board, Mr. Nicholas Boltwright from 6 Pembroke Street. For reappointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Dr. Alice Murillo from 175 Cottage Street.
Okay, roll call. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Abadizaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Perlatanda absent, Counsel Tejada absent, Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop absent, Counsel Recupero? Eight in favor and unopposed, three absent. The motion is adopted. The next order introduced by Counselor Brown. Ordered that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the sum of $260,000 was appropriated under the fiscal year... $260,000 was appropriated under the fiscal year 2017 CEIP plan for...
Accept and file on roll call, if we can, if there's no objection, we could put B and C together?
B and C.
Any objections?
And, C is $400,000. C is the $400,000 appropriated under the FY 2018 CEIP plan for roadway improvement. Congress has a free cash project account, and a balance remains after the completion of the project. And to complete that project, therefore, a portion of that balance in the amount of $244,778 is hereby transferred for infrastructure improvements on the FY 20 signalization upgrades at select location projects. Those are the two orders. A yes would be to...
Adopt them both.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vido?
Yes.
Council Avizaneda?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda absent, Council Tejada absent, Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop absent, Council Recupero?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none opposed, three absent, the two orders are adopted. The next order is introduced by Council Brown. We have the city-owned space known as Voke Park, which is located at 540 Washington Ave and documented as parcel ID 89-46 on the city's assessor maps, and we have...
Council Brown?
Yes, again, we've had this as second reading, if I can adopt both of these. D and E, just read the amounts, it's appropriation for the conclusion of the parks.
Okay, this is a $400,000 park grant for the renovation of Voke Park. The renovation of this facility is estimated to cost $750,000, and the city will be reimbursed for 70% of the full project cost, up to $400,000.
That's E, D is for...
That's D, right. Now, E is the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The city has previously appropriated a total of $750,000 to the Department of Planning and Development to cover the full project cost. In order to carry out the successful renovation of Eden Park, $90,000 in additional funding is required to satisfy the total construction amount of the lowest responsible bidder. Therefore, it's $90,000 request from Free Cash.
So, you're asking that we vote for them both?
Option under roll call, Madam President, please.
Yep. That's it?
Councilor Garcia? Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Council Avizaneda?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda absent, Council Tejada absent, Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop absent, and Council Recupero?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none opposed, three absent, the two orders have been adopted.
And then, we have one more.
We have one more. Oh, yours is under new business. Okay, that's all the orders under second readings. We have one order left on the new...
Council Recupero?
A personal privilege.
You have the floor, councilor. Yeah, but he's asking for appointments.
I'll wait up there, it's finished, I'll wait up there.
No, go ahead, go ahead, you have the floor, councilor.
Finish one order?
Okay, okay.
Final, this is the last order introduced this evening. Audit at a public hearing is scheduled for December 23, 2019, regarding the TIF agreement for the Ennis project. If there are no objections?
See, none some move, thank you, Councilor Robinson. Councilor Rob, Recupero, you have the floor.
Last week, I tried to make a point, and my fellow counselor says that it wasn't, that I didn't know what I was saying, but I did know what I was saying, because here's the proof.
Can you specify exactly what you're speaking on, counselor?
I'm speaking on the Park and Traffic Commission. That when they, last week, I said that we should have had, that they should have contacted us first, and they said that we have final say. We tell them at the end, we have final say, but we don't have final say. Over here, we said that we have an order saying for them not to do it. They did it anyways. They enacted a sign, a one-way sign on Ellsworth Street, and which, it never came in front of us, it never came to the people, and they still did it anyways. So, the whole point I'm trying to make is that they said, the counselor says that they, we have final say, but we don't. If we have final say, why do they enact these things and don't tell us? Well, we're supposed to know what goes on, but everything that we're supposed to do doesn't really happen all the time. Everything that's supposed to be done doesn't say it's supposed to be, and it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Recupero. Public announcements?
Is that something we did?
No.
Okay, I'm not sure what it was.
Public announcements? Councilor Garcia?
Well, I guess the only public announcement that I have this week that would make sense is I'm wishing everyone a great time with their families and loved ones for Thanksgiving. So, I hope that you have a great time with, again, your loved ones and some very deserved time off for this great holiday. So, that's my brief announcement.
Councilor Robinson?
I'd like to wish my colleague Bobby Bishop a happy birthday. That's the reason why he's not here with us tonight.
Yep. Any other announcements, Councilor Brown?
Thank you. Just for the folks who want to go out, if you don't have a place to go, tomorrow, we're having our annual Thanksgiving dinner. It's on Chelsea Street in Everett, Zion Church Ministries. With the help of Mass Bass in the city of Everett, we host a annual Thanksgiving dinner. It starts from 4:00 to 8:00. We've already cooked to date about 45 turkeys. So, bring an appetizer, bring a hungry mouth, and have some really good food. So, if you're not doing anything tomorrow, it's supposed to be a beautiful day out weather-wise. It's on the Connolly Center on Chelsea Street in Everett. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Moments of silence?
Jimmy Riley?
Any other moments of silence? See, none for the business before us, we adjourned.